All right, I think we're going to go ahead and get started. Good afternoon, everyone. We're going to go ahead and get started today in today's finance hearing. It is Tuesday, October 8th. The purpose of today's finance hearing is to review the City of Columbus Consolidated Action Plan fiscal year 2020 and the 2020 to 2024 consolidated plan. I want to start by thanking my council members in attendance. Councilmember Dorance and Councilmember Faver, thank you for being here. The consolidated plan, the action plan, the consolidated plan combines the application and planning process for a group of federal housing and urban development or HUD grants into a single document. The grants covered are the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, the Home Investment Partnerships, or HOME, the Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG, and Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS, HAPWA. As a condition of receiving these federal grant dollars, the city is required to submit a five-year consolidated plan with an annual plan to allocate funding submitted in each of the program years. This 2020 action plan is the first year of the new 2020 to 2024 plan. These dollars represent important investments in Columbus neighborhoods that focus on the housing, development, and infrastructure needs of low to moderate income households. An important component of allocating these dollars is public feedback. In addition to any public comment we receive at this hearing, there is a 30-day public comment period for these plans, and I encourage Columbus residents to submit their neighborhood development priorities to the Department of Finance and Management or directly to my office. So today, before we get into the meat of the hearing, I want to give a moment for my council colleagues to add anything that they may want to say. And in particular, I want to thank Councilmember Faver for being here. She is the Chair of the Housing Committee, and given that the goals of these federal grants are so critical to housing opportunities for our residents, I would like to allow Councilmember Faver to take the floor if there are any specific priorities you want to outline from a housing lens.
Thank you, President Pro Tim Brown, for your leadership and support of these issues, especially around housing. I'm thrilled to serve as the Housing Chair. We're doing a lot of work. Just today, we launched an eviction prevention program, which is a $300,000 fund in collaboration with Impact Community Action and the Legal Aid Society to provide emergency rental mortgage assistance and legal support. We are also focusing on retaliatory eviction code change, which was also referenced in the paper today. We had our first conviction over a municipal court, and so that's a huge win as it relates to just evictions in general. It's also noted that we kicked off the regional housing study with MORPC and other central Ohio municipalities to analyze our housing needs as a community and develop a plan for implementation. The Central Ohio Community Land Trust celebrated the completion of the first land trust home on the city's South Side just a few months ago, and we announced a $100 million housing action fund to make additional resources available for affordable housing projects. All of these efforts are critical to holistically addressing the problem of affordable housing in Columbus, and that's why I'm excited about today's hearing, as these funds are directly connected to housing and development. Looking forward to today's hearing. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Faver, for your insights. Councilmember Dorance, is there anything that you'd like to add? Thank you for being here. So we will first hear an overview, excuse me, from Finance and Management Deputy Director Dan Giangardella before moving into presentations from departments responsible for administering these federal grant programs. And then we also have three of our community partners here to discuss their partnership with the city on affordable housing projects made possible through these grant dollars. With that, I will turn the microphone over to Deputy Director Giangardella.
Chair Brown, members of the council, thank you for allowing Finance and Management to, as well as my colleagues, to present an overview this afternoon of the city's 2020 action plan and the 20 to 24 consolidated plan. I will provide a general overview of the grants program, briefly discuss the administrative oversight of the plan that is provided by Finance and Management, grant staff, and then discuss briefly the process for drafting the five-year consolidated plan. Then, as you mentioned, each of the presenters will discuss more specific projects and initiatives with their respective departments. The City of Columbus is an entitlement jurisdiction that receives federal funds from the Housing and Urban Development Department to support the number of local projects and initiatives related to neighborhoods and community activities. The most recent consolidated plan for the years 2020 to 2024 was developed with input from residents, neighborhood organizations, and other community representatives, and is a collaborative effort in which the community identifies its housing, infrastructure, and community development needs. As a condition of receiving these funds, the City of Columbus is required by HUD to submit a five-year consolidated plan, which outlines the city's needs and priorities. The previous plan for the years 2015 through 2019 was developed in 2014. Next year's 2020 action plan will be the first year from the newly developed 20 to 24 consolidated plan. Therefore, the 2020 action plan describes the activities and programs for the first year of the new consolidated plan and addresses the use of funds for the following areas: affordable housing, housing for special needs populations, community and economic development, health, recreation, and social services, and infrastructure improvements. The plan consists of four grant areas as follows: the Community Development Block Grant, otherwise known as CDBG, Home Investment Partnerships Program, or HOME, Emergency Shelter Grant, sometimes referred to as ESG, and then Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS, sometimes known as HAPWA. For these four grant areas, the city must submit yearly applications to HUD. This process is known as the action plan. The 2020 proposed action plan outlines the city's grant resources, the yearly budgets for each of those grant areas, as well as the description of the proposed programs and activities. The total action plan for 2020 is approximately $27.1 million, a portion of which are carryover funds from 2019. As always, these are estimates at this time based on the grant funds that we might receive from the federal government, which typically is not released until sometime, usually next spring, we get the final numbers from them. The proposed 2020 plan provides programs for five city departments: development, neighborhoods, recreation parks, finance and management, and health. The proposed action plan lists the programs and respective funding levels, and then a narrative description for each of those grant areas. I will now address the anticipated planned budget for each of those four grant areas. The respective departments will then, as I mentioned, provide some specific details on those programs. First, CDBG, or the Community Development Block Grant, which is the largest of the four grants, and the proposed budget for 2020 is approximately $10.5 million. The purpose of the CDBG program is to build equitable neighborhoods by addressing housing, economic development, and infrastructure needs. Besides the grant dollars, the balance of the program is funded through income and prior year carryover. CDBG monies are designed to support programs that assist low to moderate income residents, help elimination of slum and blighted conditions within the city. These funds are administered through several departments, including development, finance and management, neighborhoods, and recreation and parks. The second grant is the Home Investment Partnership Program, and is budgeted a little over $4 million, plus additional carryover funds. Home grants are administered through Department of Development and are used to increase homeownership opportunities in the preservation and production of affordable rental housing for economically eligible communities. The third action grant program is Emergency Solutions Grant, or ESG, which is also administered by the Department of Development. The budget is approximately $580,000, which is roughly the same level as 2019. These grant funds are used to coordinate and stabilize emergency shelter programs for people who need immediate housing. The Force Action Plan Grant is the housing opportunities for persons with AIDS, again otherwise known as HAPWA. The budget is projected to be roughly $2.1 million. This grant is administered through Columbus Public Health, is used to address the housing needs of low-income persons infected with HIV/AIDS and their families in the 8-county Columbus area. As part of the grant awards each year, the plan process requires public input. Part of the public process allows the public and stakeholders an opportunity to share their concerns and/or suggest future projects. The city began a 30-day public notice process on October 1st of this year. The public notice process is to inform the community of our proposed 20 to 24 consolidated plan, also the action plan budget for 2020, and the citizen participation plan, and then to receive comments. Of course, this hearing this evening is also part of this public notification input process, and as Chair Brown mentioned, any public comments concerning the plan, we, of course, like to receive those by the end of the 30-day period, which is Thursday, October 31st, 2019. There are hard copies of the proposed plan, as well as the action budget and the participation plan. They can receive those by calling our office, (614) 645-8600. There'll be a slide here at the end with this contact information, or they can go on the city's website under Finance and Management, columbus.gov/finance, and find it there as well. Comments may also be sent to our office at City of Columbus Finance and Management, and at the end here, we will have a slide with a contact information, attention to Jordan Fraze, along with his email address. The proposed consolidated plan supports a budget strength of approximately 21 full-time and 55 part-time employees. This is mainly in the CDBG portion of the plan, with most of those employees in the Recreation and Parks Department. I will now address the specific funding for the finance and management portion of the plan for 2020. The budget is $1.1 million, and it's primarily in the CDBG portion of the plan. Finance and management is responsible for administering the four plan areas and other eligible HUD grant programs. The budget for staff is approximately $450,000, provides funding for three full-time employees. The staff is responsible for not only the budget development, but managing the financial resources, regulatory compliance through HUD, any reporting and monitoring that HUD would also require. The grants management staff also includes funding for affordable housing services and the costs related to the 20 to 24 consolidated plan. Fair housing enforcement is typically a contract with Columbus Urban League, and the cost of that is approximately $150,000. Finance and management budget also includes $540,000 to help with renovations at the Central Community House at 1150 East Main Street. The Community House is a full-service community center focused on learning and socializing opportunities for low-income families and individuals that reside in the Near East vicinity. This facility is built on city property. The funds in this plan will be used to upgrade infrastructure related to that building, such as the HVAC systems, renovating the parking lot interior and exterior lighting, replacing the roof, improving the security and fire alarm systems, and creating electric power generation. 2020 is the first year of the new consolidated plan for the next five-year period, 20 to 20 to 2024. The grant staff has spent the past six to nine months developing this plan. This plan looks at HUD data, community feedback, local needs, outlining priorities for the future grant projects and expenditures. In conjunction with Franklin County Economic Development and Planning, three public meetings were held earlier this year, this past spring: March 7th, 2019, at the Columbus Main Library; April 11th, 2019, at the Northern Lights Library; and then May 1st, 2019, at the Community Development for All People Free store. These meetings were also advertised in the Columbus Dispatch through email from the Ohio CDC Association's website, Nextdoor app, notifications to area commissions, and contact with 344 individuals and agency notifications. Besides the previously mentioned meetings and notifications, there was also 1,200 responses received via online survey that was advertised on our website from March until June of this year and through a variety of public media. Finally, I would like to thank the Finance and Management Grant Staff, also the fiscal staffs in respective departments, and Development Neighborhoods, Recreation and Parks, and Health, and of course, the three members of our staff: Jordan Fraze, Sakri Chep, and especially Carolyn Thurman, our grants manager. I'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have, and again, up on the board there is the email for the contact for our grant staff, if anyone would have any, seeking any information, as well as a direct contact for Jordan Fraze, our management, that's helping coordinate the plan and the budget for 2020. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Can you verbally say that email address? I don't have my screen with me, or I'd repeat it.
Yes, I believe it is capital J-C, capital F-R-A-S-E at columbus.gov. Fraze, F-R-A-S-E.
Thank you.
And also, they can reach him via phone, (614) 645-8600.
Great. Thank you so much, Deputy Director. Are there any questions yet at this point from my colleagues? Yep, Councilmember Faver.
Just one question. Director, you mentioned that the action plan total is right around $27 million this year, or projected. Can you speak a little bit about the carryover funds? You acknowledged that 27 was also inclusive of some carryover funds. What are those funds, and why are they being carried over?
I think we have approximately four to five million carryover funds in HOME. I think there's an additional $1 million in the HAPWA area. There also is a small amount of infrastructure under CDBG. Typically, with respect to carryover, some of these projects take a little longer than a year to develop, particularly with negotiating some of the contracts for home project programs. I think our, my colleagues in development will be able to address some of those specific areas. With respect to the infrastructure, we, last year for the first time, put a significant number of dollars in some of our infrastructure improvements, actually for this year, Parsons Avenue resurfacing as well, sidewalk and streetlights. Some of that have to do with design work for some of those projects, occasionally with streetlights, and right-of-way, might have to be some right-of-way acquisitions. So some of that is involved in planning, it just takes a little longer. We don't lose those funds, they carry over into the following year, and we're moving very expeditiously to spend those dollars.
Anything else? Thank you very much. Next, we will have Audrey Regan with the Director of Sexual Health Promotion at Columbus Public Health. And I said Regan, but it might be Reagan.
No, you're correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. Go ahead.
Great. Well, thank you very much, councilmembers, for allowing me this opportunity to update you on the HAPWA program. I'm Audrey Regan, as was said, and I'm with Columbus Public Health. HAPWA stands for the Housing Opportunities for People Living with HIV and AIDS, and the funds specifically go to benefit low-income persons who are medically diagnosed with HIV and their families. We do serve an 8-county region of central Ohio, and we really focus on providing this housing assistance and the related supportive services in order to reduce the risk of homelessness, but also to increase access to appropriate health care, because the goal for every person living with HIV is to achieve viral suppression. Once an individual is virally suppressed, they cannot spread the virus to their sexual The HAPWA program funds four service categories, and the largest of these is TBRA, or Tenant-Based Rental Assistance, and we anticipate serving 146 households in 2020. TBRA provides a monthly rental subsidy that stays with the client in the housing of their choice. We also provide support through STRUMU, or Short-Term Rental Mortgage and Utility Assistance, and we anticipate serving about 55 households in 2020. These funds provide financial assistance to homeowners and renters so that they can remain in their current residence. It's a type of emergency intervention for people who are at imminent risk of losing their housing. HAPWA also supports permanent housing placement, so we anticipate serving 77 households in 2020 with permanent housing placement, and this helps to establish households permanently. So it may pay things like first-time rent, utility connection services, processing fees associated with getting newly established in a residence. And then we also serve supportive services, so all of the individuals who are served in the other funded service category, as well as others, approximately 244, we project for 2020, receive supportive services, and this is a type of housing assistance case management type of service. One particular, oh, I'm sorry, I can't go back. Oh, there we are. I'm sorry about that. We do have five service providers that help us to deliver these services. Three of them are relatively new to us. Jewish Family Services just came on this year in 2019. Lutheran Social Services, Faith Mission, and Licking County Coalition for Housing will be new in 2020. Equitas Health has been a longtime partner of Columbus Public Health, as well as Lancaster Fairfield Community Action. Within the Support Services category, one of the pilot projects that we're working on with Jewish Family Services is around employment support, and so clients who are in our HAPWA program or in our Ryan White program can meet with an employment counselor who helps to develop an individualized employment plan, they help them do some strategic job searching, and provide job retention services to them. It's a pilot program, but we're very excited with our first couple of months with them. With the goal is really through employment, we are hoping to bring stability to our clients, and ultimately, again, as viral suppression. So that is the HAPWA program in summary. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Are there any questions from my colleagues? Councilmember Faver?
Thank you for your presentation. I'm wondering if you could elaborate on the tenant-based rental assistance. So you estimate 146 households would be provided with assistance. Is that just one-month assistance, or do you see a couple of months where the funds would be able to help someone out?
Sure. The tenant-based rental assistance is generally ongoing, it's long-term in nature, so it's often for our individuals who are medically diagnosed with a disability, and it allows us to keep them stable. So most households do receive 12 months' worth of assistance.
Councilmember Dorance?
Yeah, I was wondering if you could speak a little bit more to the employment pilot program. Curious, you know, what the capacity looks like starting off, and certainly how folks are sort of being directed to that program at this point?
Sure. So our pilot program just began in July, so I have very preliminary information to share at this point, but it is a pilot, so we hope to grow it in 2020. Clients who are identified through either our HAPWA TBRA program as people who maybe are underemployed or unemployed, as well as through our Ryan White program. So Ryan White is essentially a health insurance program for individuals who are HIV-positive. It's a grant that we receive directly from the Department of Health and Human Services that also has a case management program where we work with about 2,500 individuals living with HIV. So the medical case managers can also identify people who are unemployed or underemployed and refer to the Jewish Family Services program. We currently do only have one benefits counselor, but I think as the program grows, we hope to be able to expand that.
Could you speak a little bit about the permanent placement? So does that look like actual down payment assistance for someone who's looking to get their first home or condo or something like that?
Yeah, the permanent housing placement is more for rent than for mortgage, and so it does provide the first month's rent. It can provide security deposits, but not to exceed more than two months. The security deposit can't be more than two months. Oftentimes, it's a one-time utility connection charge, which can be a barrier for individuals as they're trying to establish themselves in a new place.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we will hear from Julia Carter, who is Fiscal Manager with the Department of Neighborhoods.
Thank you, Chair Brown, and members of council. My name is Julia Carter. I'm Assistant Director with the Department of Neighborhoods, and I will give you a brief overview of our budget and how we utilize CDBG block grant funds. The Comprehensive Neighborhood Safety Strategy, or CNSS, will address social determinants of safety through dedicated funding and cross-agency partnerships. Neighborhood crisis response, led by the Department of Neighborhoods, will drive investments in our target communities of Linden, Hilltop, and the South Side. Aligned Community Investments, the Comprehensive Neighborhood Safety Strategy is being advanced through investments across multiple departments and cross-funding sources. Examples include addressing illegal dumping in partnership with the Clean Neighborhoods Program with Public Service and the Department of Neighborhoods. In addition, lighting and sidewalk investments in partnership with the Department of Utilities and Public Service and the Department of Neighborhoods. Our 2020 budget includes $300,000 for three full-time staff members, $766,000 for design work to begin in the South Side and the Hilltop. There's $383,000 for a capital outlay for public service projects to begin the work in Linden, that the design work has already been completed. And that's our budget. Do you have any questions?
Are there any questions?
I'm sorry, it was just a little difficult to hear. Could you, what is design work? We're talking about some design work to be done in Linden and on the South Side, and for our residents that are watching at home, if we could just elaborate a little bit on what that actually means.
So our projects include LED lighting, ADA curb ramps, and gap sidewalks. All of that requires the design work to be completed by an engineer, so that is the design work that I'm referencing.
And that work is for Linden and South Side of Columbus?
The design work is ongoing in 2019 for Linden, and the work will begin on the South Side and Hilltop in 2020.
Thank you.
And the three staff people that the grant funds, are they responsible for overseeing all functions of the grant within the Department of Neighborhoods? Are they, can you explain sort of how their management process unfolds?
So we have three full-time staff people who are funded with Community Development Block Grant. The one staff person oversees the Neighborhood Crisis Response section of this work, and we have two additional full-time members who work in our Neighborhood Pride Centers.
Councilmember Dorance?
Now, I'm wondering if you could just speak to sort of the coordination between the Department of Neighborhoods and the other departments that's necessary to bring some of the sort of physical infrastructure that's going through the department right now. Obviously, the neighbors department isn't typically the ones that are doing sidewalks and streetlights and that kind of thing. I'm just wondering if you could sort of enlighten us a little bit about what that coordinated process looks like from a department perspective?
Yes. So for the Department of Neighborhoods, we gather the data that's related to crimes that are committed in these communities, and we share that data with those departments to drive the investments.
So they don't manage the grants? They manage the information flow that will determine where the grants go? The staff people?
Can you say that one more time?
So the three staff people that the funds pay for, they don't manage the grants? They're not managing the design work, per se? They're doing work in the neighborhoods that manages the information flow to other departments, which then make that investment decision?
Correct.
Okay.
And crisis response, what does that look like for the three identified communities?
Do you mean the actual program, the Neighborhood Crisis Response?
Yes.
So for the three communities, information is gathered from a plethora of sources throughout the city. There's the Department of Development, There's the Department of Development, Public Safety, Public Service, recreation and parks, and Public Health. Information is gathered from all of those departments as it relates to violent crimes that are committed in the community, and that is what drives the investment.
I guess the final question from me would be how the department plans to measure success? Like, what are the desired outcomes? How do you -- and I don't know if that's something that the Finance Department looks at or defers to the Department of Neighborhoods, but how do we measure the success of these dollars in terms of their intended outcome?
I think that the -- and I don't think I'm the person to answer this question as the fiscal manager. We may be able -- we might need to get back to you on that.
Okay. Yep. We'd be interested in that. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Seeing no further questions for Neighborhoods, I would like to move on to the Recreation and Parks Department Fiscal Manager, Steve Hyland.
Good evening. Steve Hyland with Recreation and Parks. Thank you for this opportunity to present on behalf of Recreation and Parks. We have two areas. $705,000 is for staffing needs, and then another $1,581,000 for playground and tree canopy improvements. I'll go into detail on the next couple of slides. First staffing need is for our Capital Kids After School Program at $619,438. That covers five full-time employees and 30 part-time staff. They work throughout the year at Feddersen, Marion Franklin, Solom Gardens, and Beatty Community Centers. Each site serves 35 to 40 children aged K through 5 each day. During spring break, they operate a full camp and also an eight-week camp during the summer. The program offers homework help and life skill development. That's the Capital Kids program. Secondly is the fitness camps. That's all part-time. The locations that we serve, the fitness camps currently is driving -- well, not currently, their proposed driving park, Glenwood, Marion Franklin, and Douglas are the 2019, 2020 sites that will be the fitness camps for our part-time. It's a full-day camp specifically for youth with parents who work outside of the home and all meet income guidelines. Campers participate in a variety of activities, which include fitness training, arts, crafts, and field trips. It's for ages 5 through 15. Each site has 50 spaces available. And finally, we have improvements to 10 locations throughout the city. These improvements are going to include playground improvements and all 720 trees planted across the 10 sites. Each area will be developed with not only playgrounds, but site work. Special note to add is there's going to be $57,000 that all residents that are within a 10-minute walk of each of these areas are going to have these improvements made. That's the presentation I have for Rec and Parks. If you guys have any questions, happy to answer.
Need my mic on. Thank you so much. Do my colleagues have questions for the Recreation and Parks Department? Councilmember Dorance?
Yes, Steve, I was just curious with the fitness camps, how we're going about selecting which sites to have those at?
I think it's -- they've changed, and I don't know the change, sorry to say, but it's based on participation levels that, you know, we have a new program administrator who's doing a great job. We determine how many people are coming, and then if we see a need in another area, then we move it. We only have the ability to serve at these four sites currently, so it just kind of depends on participation levels. If we see we're going to get it up to the more of the 50 maximum, we're going to move it somewhere else. But these seem to be the needs that she's established as the best places to serve right now.
And speaking to that 50-person cap, in prior years, have we hit that normally?
It varies, but as you know, we also have other recreation programs going on at the centers, too. All summer long, we're extremely busy with all types of activities. Some are paid campers, some are free activities, but for the most part, I would say, yes, it's been in the 40 to 50 range.
So again, in past years, like, we've been at either at capacity or very near capacity for this?
It has been. There's been some, I can't say all of them, are at capacity when they don't reach that, or we've found a need to serve in another area, then we try to fill that. If there's not a need being met with our normal recreation camps, because we have playgrounds also that are a free activity as well, but we also have paid camps as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. And I may have missed this, I'm sorry if I did, but you, the tree plantings in the Mideast community?
Correct.
Did you choose the Mideast community because of a particularly low tree canopy percentage there?
I think the whole idea is just to make the tree canopy greater across the whole city. So, you know, some are more affected with the emerald ashbore disease, other of them, it's just it's a better need for that area. So I would say, yes, the answer would be based on the surveys that we've done with needing trees in different areas.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Faver?
How were the other parks and trail improvements selected?
I'm having trouble answering that, and I don't want to put someone in the room on the spot. Morgan, are you in here? Are we allowed to ask people on our staff that question? Is he in there, Morgan? Sorry, I don't want people to put you on the spot. I don't know how they were selected.
Although, if you're going to answer, you have to come to the mic, I'm sorry.
I really put you on the spot, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Sorry about that. Is it on?
Sorry, Morgan.
That's okay. I can also clarify the answer about your -- the question about the Mideast, the trees, the tree -- we are planting park trees in all of the communities, in the parks in all of the communities, but the Mideast, we're also doing the trees in the street right-of-ways. And we did select the Mideast because it's a large area, and it had a lot of the -- a lot of the street right-of-ways were in CDBG eligible, and it was in our 2015 assessment, an area that was designated as a lower tree canopy. For the question about the playgrounds, so we have kind of three areas that we look at, our maintenance priorities. So we have a maintenance list of playgrounds that need repair, replacement. So we looked at those. We looked at our community input, which could come from -- it could come from our 3-1-1 requests, where people looking for playgrounds. Sorry, I wasn't expecting to be up here. And then it also looks at our community recreation. So we tried to focus these at places where they have centers that are heavily used, places that have sports parks, where so you have like multiple types of audiences coming to them, and places that have dense impact, far impact on the 10-minute walk.
So what should residents expect to see with these improvements?
So three of the locations are actually like, kind of almost like a reciting of the playground with rubberized safety surfaces, which they've not had before. And I know that the map is a little bit small, but the rest of them are just playground -- all of the playgrounds that exist there, if something exists, is over 20 years old. So it's going to be something brand-new. We're trying to, you know, just get into the new generation of playgrounds, new types of activities, a little bit more into the themes that we like to see around like natural play areas. So yeah, it should be really -- it should be very noticeable, immediately tangible impact.
Sure. We appreciate it. So next, the final city department presentation will be from Hannah Jones, Deputy Director of the Department of Development. Hi, Hannah.
Thank you, President President Brown. I'm in favor. Oh, shoot. Sorry. It's been so long since I've been here, I'm sorry. And you guys have all this new fancy technology. My apologies. For the opportunity to present the Department of Development portion of the 2020 Action Plan. The sum total of the Department of Development's 2020 Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnership Program, and Emergency Solutions Grant Budget for the Department of Development is approximately $10 million. And in an effort to save time and space from here on out, I'll refer to them as CDBG, Home, and ESG, or else we'll be here for a very long time. So just letting you know, a lot of acronyms to come. The department's projected CDBG budget for 2020 is approximately $5.6 million. The department's projected home budget for 2020 is approximately $4.3 million. ESG for 2020 is approximately $580,000. On the slides that follow, we will dive deeper into how we are investing these funds in our community. The 2020 CDBG budget allows the Department of Development to focus its efforts on economic development and neighborhood improvements, addressing both the department's core mission and the consolidated plan priorities. Neighborhood-based businesses are vital to the health and well-being of our neighborhoods and communities. Support of these programs generates entrepreneurship and jobs. We plan to use approximately $272,000 of our budget to fund efforts in support of this work. $72,000 will be utilized to support neighborhood business organizations in our neighborhood commercial revitalization areas, with capacity-building measures to prepare them to undertake broader neighborhood-based economic development projects. $200,000 is designated to support small businesses and entrepreneurial development through the Accelerate Columbus Program that our Small Business Division is undertaking right now. In addition to our small business support, the department has applied for additional funds in the amount of $3.4 million to be spent on two infrastructure projects. Approximately $1.9 million will be used to improve pedestrian access within the Hilltop, Linden, and nearest neighborhoods. Work includes the construction of new sidewalks to make the areas more pedestrian-friendly. This project is scheduled to be completed by the December of 2020 and will connect our residents with critical resources such as grocery stores, pharmacies, and childcare within their neighborhoods. Additionally, we have $1.5 million in funding for the installation of lighting on Cleveland Avenue between Chittenden and Hudson. The project is Phase II of a larger project to improve pedestrian safety by installing approximately 100 light fixtures along the street. The first phase will be complete in March of 2020, and the second phase should be complete by March of 2021. Both of these service-grade examples of what Councilmember Dorance was speaking to of coordination with the Department of Neighborhoods and others on how we respond to some of our core neighborhoods. Within the Housing Division, we will continue to work and address one of the city's highest needs, which Councilmember Faver has highlighted and is an advocate for affordable housing in our community. Oh, and I skipped ahead, sorry. The City of Columbus is dedicated to ensuring homeowners and tenants are provided with safe and sanitary conditions. This will be achieved through the following efforts. Partnering with local nonprofits to administer the CHORs program, which offers low-to-moderate income individuals with minor home repairs. The grant will provide up to approximately $260,000 to nonprofits to improve over 100 homes throughout the city. The Housing Division will commit $110,000 to homebuyer counseling agencies, which will provide residents with pre-purchase and foreclosure prevention counseling to ensure that every resident has the opportunity of homeownership. And the budget this year reflects a $50,000 increase over the amount that was budgeted for homebuyer counseling last year in 2019. The department has also applied for an additional $500,000 to begin funding our rental rehabilitation program again. This program has not been funded in several years, and we're excited the opportunity to start it up again. It will provide zero-interest loans for up to $100,000 to help small landlords to rehabilitate properties for tenants that are at 80% AMI or below in our community. The money will assist landlords to restore decent, safe, and sanitary living conditions to support the needs of our community within the city. Other CDBG programs that receive support within our department are our Relocation Services, which come when we have to do vacates associated with code enforcement actions, as well as $875,000 that goes to support our code enforcement activities to educate landlords, tenants, and citizens on safe and sanitary living environments. And again, our code enforcement team coordinates very closely with neighborhoods and health on our crisis responses to violent crime throughout our city. And now it doesn't want to go. There we go. Home funds are designated -- are designed to address the need of affordable housing by preserving and expanding housing options to the public in an effort to increase homeownership opportunities, provide affordable rental housing options, and provide gap financing to developers to construct new or rehabilitate existing housing stock. Our 2020 funds budget includes a total of $4.3 million. $200,000 is to support our community housing development organizations, lovingly known as CHODOs, with operating support for capacity. $600,000 is for a set aside that is utilized just by them as our community development housing partners. $442,500 goes to support the development staff associated with the home-funded programs out of the Division of Housing. $325,000 goes to the Community Shelter Board to provide tenant-based rental assistance. $927,000 will be going to Habitat for Humanities to support homeowner housing development, and we have them here to talk more about their programming. $206,000 goes for down payment assistance to income-qualified first-time homebuyers within our city. And then we have $1.6 million that's set aside for rental housing projects, multifamily projects associated with the low-income housing tax credit awards that are made each year. One example of that would be Creekside. It's approximately 63 units of supportive housing to help those who are homeless or in imminent danger of becoming homeless and are dealing with severe or persistent mental illness. Additionally, the department anticipates utilizing approximately $8.2 million in carryover dollars for ongoing and future projects. As Dan referenced earlier, a lot of stuff takes a bit of time in the pipeline to get from project creation to actual construction and implementation. So we have $3.4 million that's anticipated to be fully expended by 2020 on nine projects, which will create approximately 236 units. We have $2 million, which will be spent on three projects constructing new housing units in 2021 that will be fully expended by 2021, which will provide an additional 194 units of housing. And an additional $2.3 million is anticipated to be fully expended by 2022 to complete 355 units of affordable housing. This collectively represents the creation of 785 units of housing over the next three years for our community. That concludes our presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Faver?
The projects that you just outlined that are slated to be online within the next two to three years, can you talk about what income level that would address in our community?
Sure. So it is a rather broad spectrum. We have some projects that are going to serve between 30 and 50%, some that go all the way up to 80. A lot of our rental projects benefit from a new law that allows rent averaging. So whereas before, an entire project might be closer to 60%, we now have the option that if they're going to serve some tenants that might be 80, as long as they serve some tenants that are 30%, they're allowed to have a range. That's very exciting to us, because it allows us to serve much more vulnerable populations. Some of our homeownership projects are closer to 80% AMI, and then Habitat serves a wide range as well. So I would say broadly, it's between 30 and 80% AMI collectively.
Are there any projects that are specific to address the needs of our aging community?
Yes, we do have a number of senior projects. And I'm trying to see. Can I get back to you on the list?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I'll just keep going then.
Yeah. I'm like reading, and I can tell you that by the time the speakers get done, I will have that answer.
Okay. All right, perfect. And then you acknowledge that there is a new line item for rental rehabilitation?
Yes.
That will be used for current landlords and provide them with an opportunity to update their properties. Can you give us some more information about that?
Yes. Our hope is to identify and partnership with other departments and our code enforcement team some core areas and neighborhoods to work in. We also want to marry it up with our LED program. So oftentimes, we have a lot of landlords who are serving residents who may have properties that would benefit from some LED remediation. So our goal is to get these dollars to go as far as they can. If we can successfully reflect that we can spend the money, our hope is to propose that it receive multi-year funding moving forward.
And are there any parameters around those dollars? So the number of units that a landlord could have?
Yes, I believe that it has to have, the owner has to have under 10 units. And the biggest parameter is the population that you are going to be serving once you are renting the unit. So 80% and below AMI.
Okay.
How long will they -- those rehabbed units need to serve, be affordable? And how does the department ensure that happens?
So now you're getting to the weeds, so I'm going to throw So now you're getting to the weeds, so I'm going to throw for the quarterback and ask for Ms. Rita Parise to come up to answer any questions. Because otherwise, I'll start messing up her program.
Yeah, totally understand. And I think actually James hooked up a podium mic.
And Rita, correct me if I got the unit count wrong, too, please.
Good afternoon, Chair Brown, councilmembers. We haven't finalized the guidelines on this program yet. The CDBG rules are a minimum of five years. The LED rules, if it's partnered with a LED program, is a minimum of three. We could go as high as 15. I think we're going to have to take a look and see what the original condition of the property and what improvements we make to make a decision about what period between five and 15 seems reasonable.
Thank you. I would just encourage, from the council perspective, obviously, to go with the longest amount that is feasible, a number of years that is feasible. You know, if these dollars are going into rehab a unit, three to five years seems like a pretty short period of time to ensure that they remain affordable. So we would encourage you, I'll speak for myself, I would encourage that you seek the longest time that you can.
Well, just to give you the landscape, what we have found, particularly working in the LIITAC program, is that by the time units get to year 15, they need all-new mechanicals, new roof, et cetera. So if you're taking an existing building and potentially don't touch all of those components at the time that you're doing the rehab, and then basically require them to remain affordable and not have an opportunity to access additional subsidy to make those repairs later on, so it does need to be a balancing act. Now, if we would follow the home rules, the home rules have specific timelines based on the amount of assistance per unit. Although frankly, what we find when we work in rental rehab is that the assistance rapidly, almost instantaneously, jumps up to what the maximum is of the 15 years at $40,000 a unit. So I think that we need to really sit down and think about the nature of the repairs that we're making and what the needs of the property are ongoing. It may be that we make a decision to go and take some extra steps, like putting in a new furnace, even though the furnace isn't in dire need of replacement, in order to extend that time, but I think we're going to have to make those judgments as the opportunity presents itself.
Okay. Councilmember Dorance?
Yeah, I just want to ask a clarifying question, and I think I already know the answer to this, but I just want to make sure I'm clear. So that, the determination based upon the condition of the unit for whether that would be, say, five years, or 10 years, or 15 years, that would be a decision that would be made specifically to those units. It would not be a guideline that, say, the city would say, you know, "We're going to do 10 years for all of these units." That would be a unit-by-unit determination based upon the condition. Is that correct?
So, as I've indicated, we have not finalized guidelines on this program. So my recommendation to my team would be that we do a more specific dive on a specific unit rather than write a guideline. Now perhaps they'll push back on me and I'll lose, so I don't want to make any guarantees for council that I can't keep.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Faver?
To either one of you, so I'm pretty awes, I'm very excited about the dollars that are going to be going towards our small business, the small businesses in our community, as well as the infrastructure improvements. We've been having a very robust conversation about sidewalk improvements throughout Columbus. Do we know, it looks like it's 3.4 million for sidewalk improvements and other infrastructure improvements, do we know how those dollars will be spread amongst those identified communities?
I will have to get back to you on that one. Yes, ma'am.
And any additional detail about the small business development?
Thank you, Rita Parise.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Are you going to follow up after, you said?
Yes, ma'am. I can tell you, there's 198 units that are for seniors.
Great. Thank you. Are there further questions for Deputy Director Jones from my colleagues? Okay, well, thank you to the departments for the hard work in putting your presentations together. We really appreciate it. And we are going to pivot now to hearing from three community partners to discuss their partnership with the city on affordable housing projects made possible through these dollars. I will start with Reverend John Edgar, if you'd like to approach. The podium here is probably the best place. Reverend John Edgar, why can't I mix my consonants correctly today? I've done that like four times. Reverend John Edgar is Executive Director of the Community Development for All People, and thank you for being with us here tonight.
Chair Brown and councilmembers, it is indeed a privilege to be able to come and share with you this afternoon. The nonprofit that I run, that you mentioned, is Community Development for All People, has a mission of improving quality of life for people who live on the south side of Columbus. And the investments, particularly through home funds, have been catalytic in really significant ways to improve housing in our community. We first started receiving home funds around 2006, and during that period, our organization has been part of developing about $85 million worth of affordable housing on the south side. So one of the key points that I would want to lift up is how these home funds leverage other money that comes both from the city and from private sources. So what you are doing with home funds is very catalytic indeed. I give a couple of illustrations. One is that there's a question about senior housing. So one of the projects that we're finishing up this summer is 60 units of affordable senior housing that's part of what's known as a loancome housing tax credit project. So we're the nonprofit entity that participates with a for-profit developer called the NRP Group. And in that particular case, it's a project of over $12 million, and if my memory is right, it's about $250,000 in home funds. So the home dollars actually leverage at a rate of, for every dollar invested, it generates another roughly $49 or $50. So it's very impactful at that level. The home funds, as was mentioned in what was shared by Deputy Director Jones, they flow in various ways. So another part of the home funds that we receive are used in an initiative called the South Side Renaissance Fund. And those home funds are grant dollars that we couple with other sources of grant funds, including over a million dollars from JP Morgan Chase. And all of that then leverages borrowing money at very advantageous levels. And so that particular initiative allows us to acquire vacant blighted properties and also vacant land. And then we renovate those houses to be long-term affordable rental places, or we build a new home on the vacant lot. And so the home funds are part of ensuring that we can, on the south side, have a sustainable mixed-income neighborhood. When we, as an organization, first got involved back around 2006 using home funds, the big issue was we had streets where as many as one out of four or one out of three houses were vacant and boarded up. And so we did a lot early on, taking home funds and using them in homeownership. Gradually, we got rid of the blight. Private market forces began to be attracted to segments of the south side that had been long ignored, going back to redlining. And now, more recently, the real issue is to preserve affordability, and we do that with rental housing. And again, the home funds have been absolutely essential in building the overall financing structure for those endeavors. Also, a modest amount of the home funds are used to support the operations of CHODOs or community housing development organizations, and we are one of those city-approved CHODOs and are grateful for the operating funds that come along with the dollars that are used for bricks and sticks. So when we look at it overall, what you're doing is truly transforming quality of life throughout the south side. And we're grateful for the home funds and would emphasize that this is key to the fabric of a mixed-income neighborhood that has housing options all across the spectrum. So I'd be happy to respond to any questions you have, and mostly just want to thank you for your investments and for the folks that, some of whom have spoken from the Department of Development, who we find to be remarkable partners, very astute in using the money well.
Thank you, Reverend. Any questions from Councilmember Faver or Dorance?
Sure.
Of course I have one. Well, first, I just want to say thank you for your commitment to the cause of affordable housing, specifically on the south side. You all have done amazing work, and we could not be happier for the work that you are doing. But with that being said, as a very successful CHODO, what are some of the hindrances that you might see, just as someone who might be thinking of starting one on another side of town, or just some things that you've had to overcome that perhaps we could be better supportive of?
Perhaps the beginning of an obvious answer is having more funds would allow us to do more work. And therefore, showing that home funds, the CDBG, are used well, hopefully ultimately percolates upward, and we'll see the federal government approve more dollars in these programs. You know, that's one of the key issues. I would say the other thing is that, from our experience, nonprofit affordable housing is at its best when it is done collaboratively. So yes, the city money and pass-through of federal funds and the bond funds, you know, that the city are investing, are essential and they're catalytic. But in our case, it's the rich partnerships with Nationwide Children's Hospital, the United Way, alluded to JP Morgan Chase Bank, Columbus Foundation. It's the way that this community can come together and bring both public and private resources that makes a world of difference. And so I think any other entity that's thinking about applying to become a CHODO, I would say it's the ability to listen carefully to the community. So what we develop responds to the hopes and aspirations of the people who live there, to start small but start, and to realize that one source isn't going to provide all the solutions. So it's not just government, though government, I think, should always lead, it's what we can do collectively. And then the other thing I would talk about is that the issue of long-term affordability is, you've already talked about the length of time to ensure affordability. I think that's very important. I think it also, though, ties into things such as the abatements that are offered in the neighborhoods called NIDS, you know, where we can develop and have lower costs because we pay taxes only on the value of the property when we started. But we are doing enough of these projects, not just us but others, that those time horizons are coming close. And so what happens downstream on property taxes, on properties that are restricted for use below 80% of AMI, I think is a crucial issue for the administration and city council because we will come to the time where rents will be driven up if we don't continue finding ways to hold property taxes in check when we are having very affordable rents.
Thank you, Reverend. And I appreciate all the work that you do on the south side and the breadth of "for all people" branded services. And you know, I know that your approach to development on the south side is holistic, and I very much appreciate your leadership and organization for that.
Thank you.
Is there anything else, any other questions? Okay, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work. Next, we have Joe McCabe, who is Vice President of Wada Cooper Companies. Welcome, Mr. McCabe, thank you for coming.
Good evening, members of council. Thank you, Chair Brown, for hosting us this evening and allowing us to speak about the benefits of the home program and some of the financial support that the city has provided. Wada Cooper Companies has a number of endeavors here in the City of Columbus that, since it's moving into Columbus in 2017 and calling it home, it's really expanded its portfolio. And a lot of what we do is formed through public-private partnership with pairing the Ohio Housing Finance Agency's 9-in-4% tax credits, bridge loans, permanent loans offered by the state, with private equity through investors, the Ohio Capital Corporation, entities like KeyBank, Huntington and others, as well as the Affordable Housing Trust, private debt and mortgages through banks like Huntington and KeyBank, as well as tying in some developer capital to make projects really work. Without that investment, the gaps wouldn't be closed. And when we look at the value of these projects from a much bigger view, you can really start to see the benefit. Across the City of Columbus, we've got several projects completed, several projects in the works, and several things right in progress right now. But most dire is to continue or advocate for the support of affordable housing with such programs as home and others, to continue to grow that. When we look at three recent examples around the city that are out there, the gap financing makes up a very small percentage of the overall project cost when you start to look at the numbers. A project like Fairwood Commons on the east side of Columbus is only, that gap financing is only about 1.7% of the overall financing. And while that may seem small, it may seem large to someone as they start to look at the numbers, that 1.7% is about $250,000 of home funds. But when we look at that spread over 30 years, the actual investment is only 42 cents per day in ensuring affordability per unit. So really, again, that value there is pretty strong. Or we look at a project like we're about to commence with or have commenced with construction on Wheatland Crossing II, a development in the Hilltop, that equates to only 36 cents per day, per unit, over that 30-year span of what the city has provided in resources to the project. So it's really crucial to us to make those gaps close, make those things work. And part of that, you know, when people ask, "Why do you need home funds to help close a gap?", it's really that in areas of revitalization, we often need things to help deal with blight removal, help deal with remediation costs. In areas that are under revitalization, you may not be able to command as high of a rent in that area. Meanwhile, in certain other areas of the city where we have embarked upon projects that may have more opportunity, the ground itself may cost more. So there are certain operational challenges as well that come into factor as well when dealing with affordable housing. One of the safest parts of the city's investment is, is that quite often these projects have 30 to 40 years of guaranteed affordability via either a deed restriction or a restrictive covenant, or just simply some of the home loan agreements that are in place with the city that require reporting and maintenance of home-restricted rents. And that really ends up meaning that families or individuals, and including a number of our properties are senior, they're paying as little as only $370 a month. That's a very important thing, given those with fixed incomes out there, working parents, single-family households, or sorry, single households, mothers with children. We think of a variety of families in need who really depend on the quality of affordable housing we find out there today. Really, though, what I wanted to end with real quick here is just a quick snapshot of a couple projects. Fairwood Commons, for example, was really a project that took 11 parcels on the east side with four vacant structures, four separate landowners, including one that was always frequently and probably still is frequently an environmental court, and provided new housing in a way that took out the blight, took out some of the barriers that were stopping development on East Main Street in what is now sort of becoming a very fast-changing neighborhood, demographically, socioeconomically. It's becoming a very different place in the Near East. And this allows us to provide housing options that, in its current form, allow aging in place, allow universal design, allow housing that protects that affordability, keeps some of the cultural diversity intact in our neighborhoods, and really allows people to stay in a place they call home. We think that these images, obviously, these kitchens look much better than the images you saw in the dilapidated houses we removed. So we're very proud of these endeavors. These projects also have a high level of green commitment. We're very proud to say that this project actually is the very first passive house project in the state of Ohio. That's a very high-energy standard developed by our colleagues in Europe. And yesterday, we had the honor of being greeted by the folks from AEP who presented us with an award based on it being one of the highest energy-saving developments AEP has in its portfolio, meaning that seniors are paying only $20 sometimes during the peak months to heat and cool their units and include their lighting in their unit. That means if they've got more money in their pockets by not paying the utility companies, they're able to buy the other crucial services they need. They're able to put more food on the table. They're able to get to the doctor and pay their medical expenses. So we're glad to be part of that solution by thinking outside the box. So we're glad to be part of that solution by thinking outside the box and advancing even green architectural agenda as part of these developments. Likewise, a project like the Livingston, just down the road, about a mile and a half south, a very different kind of neighborhood, the Driving Park neighborhood, is changing very quickly. And the Livingston met a very different, had a very different set of circumstances to it, a property with an owner that often ended up in court on all sorts of criminal activity issues. In fact, Mayor Ginther had said to us, he remembered being on city council and hearing from the local neighborhood about the problems in this building as it was converted, not from its theater use, to, but it served as an after-hours club. It served as a kind of a quasi-addiction services building that was very questionable. We don't understand how you have an addiction services building with 20 people living in it, all of which were residing in rooms with no windows. It doesn't sound like a very good quality of life, if you ask us. But we were glad to be part of a solution that's currently in progress and taking what was really bad eyesore and turning it into 45 brand-new senior apartments. We look forward to this being a lighthouse in the Driving Park community, to remove a factor of blight, to save the best parts of our historical and architectural heritage, to keep some cultural identity in the neighborhood, maintaining some of the old, yet putting some really great, brand-new features in there, also containing many of those aging-in-place components, universal design aspects, green architectural components, and providing affordability. Down the road, we see that this neighborhood is probably likely being in close proximity to downtown and neighborhoods like Franklin Park up north. It's the natural next progression in an ever-changing neighborhood. It's on a transportation corridor. It has a lot of things that really make sense, and we're glad to be part of that lighthouse and jump-starting of the revitalization in the community that really starts to change it. With that, I'd like to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you so much, Mr. McCabe, for highlighting those two projects. I either forgot or didn't know the energy savings accomplishments of Fairwood Commons. I really appreciate you calling those out. And for another time, when we have more time, I'm just really interested on how you make the costs work to do both affordability and that level of energy savings, which really should be the standard for all affordability because your point exactly about people who need to keep utility costs down so that they can preserve as much income as possible to pay for the other things that matter.
Right. And really, you know, when we, if you kind of said to me, what would be a wish list as a developer is to sort of look at, you know, these home funds can be applied really well to the affordable projects, but if more funds were made available, we could keep raising that bar. That high-energy-level standard was achieved on Fairwood Commons through a number of sources, obviously specifically through, you know, both the city's contribution as well as the equity investment from our investors, the tax credits themselves being used as the key primary vehicle. And it was done a little bit as well as being kind of a test case, let's see how it works, and let's track and monitor to see where things go. And should this be something where the costs outweigh the benefits? So far, we're hearing from our seniors that they are getting the low energy and power bills that we expected, and it's great to see that. It's also taking a different level or look at construction because we're building developments that are superior to the market-rate sector, where obviously development happens at a faster pace but is clearly happening at less quality and at a cheaper level despite charging what are rents that are substantially five, six, eight, 10 times higher than what we command in our rents. So I think that as we move forward as a city, additional support to be able to do these types of things are really important, especially when it means that for the lifespan of this property, which is well beyond 30 years of affordability, that people will be able to have that money back in their pocket to use in a very crucial way. I did want to also add real quick, too, that we really also think or endorse the city's providing funds, home funds and other types of funds to their nonprofit partners. Each of the projects that was just briefly mentioned here in slides works with or is in conjunction with a CHODO. Many of our future projects are with CHODOs or community development organizations in the neighborhoods that really help make these projects special.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And thank you, too, for your commitment to projects in areas that we know will see development pressures and really need these anchors to maintain affordable options. So thank you.
Thank you.
Are there additional questions from either of my colleagues?
Just more of a comment. So having served as an Assistant City Attorney in environmental court, I worked on that Livingston Theater property for years and funneled tons of comments, questions, and concerns, rightfully so. And so absolutely thrilled to see that project come to fruition. And then also through just the rehabilitation of a historic building in our community, and it's going to help our seniors. So just round of applause for your organization's effort to keep the integrity of the building and to serve one of our most vulnerable communities in our, in our organization's, excuse, some of our most vulnerable residents in our community, excuse me. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. McCabe. And last but not least, we have Mr. E.J. Thomas. Thank you for your patience. President and CEO of Habitat for Humanity Mid-Ohio. Thank you for being here tonight with us, Mr. Thomas.
Glad to be Chair Brown and members. Kind of hard to follow those two, given what they've done. It's been great working with them. As you know, we've been part of the Affordable Housing Alliance, and they, along with others, have spent countless hours working on the issue of affordable housing. And one of our clear objectives is to make sure that these homes are affordable in the long term, and clearly, home is instrumental in helping make that happen. I'm often asked, what is, what's your limiting factor? And I believe Reverend Edgar had mentioned that it's really no more complicated than the amount of dollars that we're able to raise. But that doesn't just come from home funds, but home funds allows us to leverage significant other dollars from, in our cases, Habitat for Humanity, the 60-area churches that work with us across three counties, the great corporate supporters like AEP and Nationwide and many others who bring dollars to the table. And what you end up doing is taking all of these different puzzle pieces and putting them together, and once you have the funding for a particular house, you can get it built. And every home is different, but home funds have been a part of what we've been doing since the mid, well, since I've been on board in '04. And the city has been absolutely great to work with because there are a lot of hoops, obviously, to jump through to make sure that we meet the compliance issues as mandated by the federal government. And of course, those pass-through dollars have to be accounted for and used wisely on our end. I would like to address the issue of energy efficiency because you're absolutely right. One of the things that home funds does is allow us to take dollars from other sponsors and put them into energy upgrades. So in our particular case, American Electric Power provides us dollars for every home so that the homes that we build with the energy package, the upgrade package, you have to buy the pieces and the parts to make the house more efficient. The home will use just slightly more than half of the energy that a home without those upgrades will use. So imagine, for instance, in Linden, where we're doing a lot of building, and we've been, we're finishing up on the South Side, and we're going to be moving back out on the West Side again. Those homes that have those energy upgrades will, you know, in the middle of the winter, which is upon us in a few months, someone who has a $300 bill, our families will be in for $140, $150. And that's for the life of the time that they own the home. So we really do depend on this funding to help us leverage into more homes. In the last few years, we've been able to increase our production significantly, and those dollars are a big part of it. Our target is the 30% to 60% area median income. We'll go to 80% on repairs. But our, that's our, that's our sweet spot for homeownership. And as we say as the alliance, when we're going around and advocating on behalf of affordable housing, everybody has a particular niche on that continuum, and ours is the 30% to 60% area median income homeownership option. We'd like to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Any questions, Councilmember Faver?
Okay.
Now, that's impressive.
Oh, you did? Okay.
No, I appreciate, thank you for coming and for outlining the use of home funds for Habitat. I appreciate that very much. And the lens that you bring through the Affordable Housing Alliance is important. I think maybe on a sentimental note here, I just want to say I was scrolling my tweets today and saw a, someone had taken a video of former President Carter, did anyone else see this today, of Jimmy Carter building a Habitat for Humanity home.
Yes.
Right after he had an accident, and actually, I think, had stitches above his eye. And Habitat for Humanity is an absolute stalwart in communities across the country. I think that that video shows that, demonstrates that, and it is a real signal to what investment in our communities and wrapping ourselves around the whole needs of families really is. So it's great to see you here today after enjoying that really kind of special and sentimental moment about the worth and the value of community organizations.
Well, thank you, and thank you for the invitation.
Just a comment, not a question. I just want to applaud you for focusing on one of the hardest areas to serve, that 30% to 60% AMI. Those projects are generally the hardest to get off the ground and to keep at an affordable level. And so it's my focus to continue to drive those projects in our community. So thank you for continuing to just move forward with those types of projects.
Well, thank you. And if I can just throw a little advertisement here, we've been, for the last four or five years, we've been working pretty hard in the Myrtle area because what we've been trying to do is a demonstration of what we can do with an entire street. So you come off of Myrtle Avenue off of Cleveland, I think we're over 12 houses now. So, and that's a street that was obviously in decline as some of, you know, that's, Linden has been an area where a lot of focus has been placed in terms of trying to help bring those neighborhoods back, and we're proud to be a part of it. And of course, the home funds are critical to that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you again. So with that, I will conclude, well, just briefly, I actually remembered a question I wanted to ask Deputy Director Jones, I'm sorry, to bring you back up into the spotlight. But with the news yesterday of the Downtown Y closing, will tenant-based rental assistance be impacted by that at all? I know development gives TBRA to CSB, who I think turns around and gives it to the Y to defray per diem costs of men living in the shelter. Am I following the money correctly there? And is there, essentially, that news event yesterday? I mean, is there an impact here?
So let me go back and get an official answer from you as far as who CSB serves through the Y and if it is at that location. What I would say is that the Y has been in conversations with us since the beginning about how to ensure that they are going to continue to serve their population wherever they may be. So whether or not there is an immediate impact with the closure, I don't anticipate our funding to serve that population changing. I would assume that we would still serve those residents because the commitment from the Y is to still serve those residents.
Got it. Thank you. Councilmember Faver?
And for Hannah or Rita, when we're looking at the projects that are in the pipeline, how many of those units do we have planned in areas of high-opportunity, high-income neighborhoods?
Oh, man.
I'm sorry.
Phew. I could get back to you on that one, yeah. All right. With that, thank you to Councilmember Faver, Chair of Housing, and Councilmember Doran's, Chair of Neighborhoods, for being here today and joining us for this hearing. Thank you to our community partners for coming today and providing their personal and unique lens on the impact of these funds. And huge gratitude to the departments for putting together informative presentations today and working with us to help tease through the details that we think are so salient for our residents. I also want to echo Deputy Director Gian Guardella's thanks to his team in finance, who works very hard on this plan and its deployment throughout the year. With that, I will close and, again, appreciate everyone's attendance and hard work.